Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bristol Town Council meeting of July 5th. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Typically, I like to move right into the meeting, but as I pointed out, it's July 5th, and yesterday was a special day in Bristol. Wanted to take a moment to speak on behalf of this council, the administrator and the town, to say a phenomenal thank you for a few people, and this is going to be an abbreviated list. We'll go through it more at the end, because there's just so many people involved. But first, we'll start with the DPW. If you've driven down Hope Street at, honestly, at any time, scary enough, it looked phenomenal. They put a lot of work, effort, and energy in to make that happen, but they didn't do by themselves. The participants, particularly in the last couple of years, with the plastic bags out there, have done a wonderful job. So have the residents that live on the parade route to keep the place clean and neat. I'm going to quote Halsey, I think he might be here, "In Bristol fashion." Ship shape in Bristol fashion, that's the term. I got it now. I reached out to our director, Director McBride, and asked him for, was there anybody else that I should focus on, on behalf of the town? He mentioned that the Rhode Island Department of Transportation was instrumental in keeping the roads clean. They have a couple of sweepers that came by and did a wonderful job. And as I said, this is a very abbreviated list. Our police department, Chief Canario, all the men and women of the department, and past that, all the men and women of the other departments, whether they were local, state, and federal, yes, we do have federal here for the Fourth of July, did a phenomenal job. How do I know? Because things were safe. We were all safe, and we're here tonight having this meeting. Our fire department and first responders, EMS and paramedics, Chief DeMello, another phenomenal job. People were safe. If there was an issue, they addressed it right away. Fourth of July Committee, Donna Falcoa, General Treasurer, Fran O'Donnell, who's the Parade Chair this year, and obviously, the many wonderful people that are involved with our Fourth of July Committee. And then Lisa Senkowitz and Gail Perella, phenomenal choice for chief marshals this year. And I'm going to end with Ms. Fourth of July, Olivia Borja, and Little Miss Fourth of July, Angela Peary. That is not the whole list. We'll talk about it at the end of the meeting, but I wanted to speak on behalf of the town to say thank you. We know how much effort and energy goes in. In fact, DPW is out there at 4:00 in the morning, and they are a representation of everyone else that put a lot of effort and energy in, so we say thank you. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Town Council, the first item on this evening's agenda is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next we have submission of minutes of previous meetings. Some of these, Mr. Chairman, are sealed. That would be Items 1, 2, 3, A1, 2, 3, and 4. So the council's motion on those would be to unseal and to approve if they so desire to do so.
Motion to approve.
And unseal.
And unseal?
Unseal.
And second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And then we have Item A5, which is from the June 7th meeting, and that would be just to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay. The next item is an advertised public hearing. This is for the lease ratification of the property, sometimes known as the Gladding property or the Azovito property, consisting of historic buildings and approximately 7,000 square feet of land for lease. It's an advertised public hearing.
So this is a public hearing. We're going to open up the public hearing. I'm going to start with all opposed, just to shake things up. So is there anyone against? Is there anyone against? Is there anyone against? Is there anyone in favor? Is there anyone in favor? Please.
Just a show of hands.
We have a show of hands of favor. I like it. Is there anyone else in favor? We have a few more show of hands, so we'll follow along with those. Anyone else in favor? Okay.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So at this point, we need a motion.
To ratify.
To ratify.
Motion to approve ratification.
There's a motion and a second. Is there discussion? I will, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I'm happy. This has been a long road. This is to fix up the property down on Thames Street, known as a Gladding property. It's been a long road, about a year, for Berkenholts, who are our partners in this project, and I'm glad that we're finally at this point. I'm sure you're happier than we all are, I'm sure, too. So thank you for sticking with it, and we look forward to a job well done.
Wish you the best of luck.
I might just add that it was a long process. We thank you for this partnership and your patience. On behalf of the town, the most important piece is the public use that we will have behind the property for all the years of Bristol, and the partnership of the renovations of this property. I know for myself, I had a lot of reservations in the discussions, and many factors that have changed, many factors that have been addressed to come to this conclusion, so...
Anyone else? So the motion to unseal the minutes happened a little bit earlier. As part of our executive session, I was actually the dissenting vote, so I was, I voted against this, not in any reflection on the Berkenholts, not in any reflection on what I believe they're going to do for the renovation and the quality of the renovation, but I did not believe that signing up the town for a 65-year lease made sense to me. So, and I want to be on record as saying that, again, not a reflection on the applicants, so, or the respondents to the RFP. So we have a motion and a second to ratify. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council, is also an advertised public hearing. This is the council consideration of the petition of Joseph B. George, I hope I pronounced that correctly, 27 Surf Drive, request for license to maintain certain town property. You have recommendations provided by the Town Administrative Department of Community Development, the Fire Chief, and also the Director of Public Works to approve, and in some cases with certain conditions.
So this is a public hearing, so we're going to open up the public hearing. Is there anyone to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak in favor? Please, step forward to the podium. Or you don't have to, if you don't want to, you can just say yes. We're starting a new process here, so...
I'm your husband.
Please. Ah, wonderful.
I'm your husband.
Welcome.
Hi. Okay, so this, this is a piece of properties that's right next to my front, the front of my yard, and right now is pretty much raw. So the idea would be to just extend my yard, just plant grass, and add a tree if the space allowed for, and just maintain it as part of the yard.
So the property address, I don't know if we said this, but I'll say it again, was 27 Surf Drive, and this does not give up the ownership to the town, it just means that it allows the maintenance to go to you and enjoy that, and actually, anybody can enjoy that area.
That would be it.
Does anybody have any questions?
I just want to make sure that, I believe I read in here, the, I don't know if it was Diane, your recommendation about the DigSafe, just to make sure that there are no utility, utilities in that area? Did, I don't know if that was passed along, or that it would be, if it would be stated on the license to maintain?
Thank you. I recommended that DigSafe be called. They're a company that marks out underground utilities, just before you do any landscaping for trees and things like that, bigger things, just because it was part of the town road, and I just don't know if there's anything underground still there. That was the only recommendation I had.
Makes sense. We'd do that.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's a great public safety advertisement for any resident or business owner of any shovel in the ground to call DigSafe, and they will come out and just make sure everything is done, so...
It just reminded me, that is a free service for them to do that.
So you had said here that you recommend that they call DigSafe prior to, and that that be a condition of the license, and I think it should be a condition of the license.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the request for the maintenance of 27 Surf Drive by Joseph George to maintain the town property as specified, with all the recommendations and approvals.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you. Good luck.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council, is Item C1, and this is the second reading for adoption of Ordinance 2017-7. This is to create a designated residential parking streets in addition to the ones that we have already, to expand that district to include some no overnight parking except with residence sticker.
So Lou, just for everyone's edification, this changes, this adds the following. Can you fill that in?
It, okay, it basically extends the existing residential parking district to include the portion of Constitution Street, which goes from High Street to Wood Street. It would include now Cook Street. It would include High Street from Church Street southerly to Union Street on both sides. It would include Pierce Avenue, Pleasant Street, Union Street, and William Street. And it also extends Wood Street from, to the point, it was previously ended at Church Street, it will go now to, to Union Street, both sides.
So if I'm a resident and I live in that area, and it wasn't previously necessary to have a sticker, I can just come into Town Hall?
Come into Town Hall, prove your residence, and that usually means by bringing in your automobile registration that has the address of, of the residence on one of those streets and the driver's license, okay, to prove that you are, in fact, who you are. And those two things will give you a resident parking sticker, which you put on your automobile, and that allows you to park in those places overnight without having to, to worry about getting a ticket. If you don't have the sticker on your car and you park overnight, you may get a parking ticket.
Okay.
And Lou, just to be clear, this would apply for 12 months of the year?
It's, it's for every day of the year.
It doesn't state in the ordinance, but it just...
Well, it's, actually, it's all, at all times. So, so that would be for 365 days, okay? The other question that did come up today, and we've had to answer this before, is that if people have overnight guests, it's very easy, all they have to do is contact our office, and we get them a, a temporary parking pass to allow them to park on the street. The resident can do that for the guest that's coming, so if they know someone's coming next week, they can just call us, and we'll instruct them as to how they would get that, that special pass. That would also, we did get questions, because some people in that area also operate Airbnb arrangements, it would be the same thing for those. We would just have to have that information, and we'll guide them through it. It's very easy. We do it in all the rest of that district, so it's not, it's not something that's difficult at all to do.
So this ordinance was in response to overnight parking issues, not solely related to Prudence Island and the ferry, but that was some of the motivation to it. The idea behind this is to widen that area so residents can park the way they should be able to park, and anyone that stays too long will be subject to a ticket. We don't want to give out any tickets, but I think the chief is pretty confident in saying that we will, if necessary, but that's certainly not the goal. The goal is to make sure that the, the streets are there for the residents, as it should be, so there's no overnight parking. Is there any questions on this?
No, I just wanted to mention that, long-term, I think we're going to have to think about a plan down the road, and we'll work with the chief on it, as regards to, once these go up, I mean, many of those people that are used to parking, they're just going to go to the other streets, you know what I mean? They're going to find it, so it just kind of keeps moving. So eventually, long-term, I think we need to sit down and figure out what we're going to need to do.
The vice chair makes a good point, is that this was to throw it as wide a net as possible. We didn't want to just go one road down, want to go a few roads down to make it less convenient to park illegally. How's that? But we all have faith and confidence in the police department that if someone is there too long and a resident calls on, on their behalf, then something will be done about it.
Well, I'm sure we'll hear from Burton Cottage in Wally, because other than that, it's Bristol Harbor next.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. As you may recall, I was the person that brought this petition forward on behalf of the residents of Constitution Street in the council. In its wisdom, I certainly has extended it through the district to prevent additional problems. And I thank you, and I thank the chief police and the police department for working so fast on this, especially in a busy season, and to bring it forward at the beginning of the summer, because we're already starting to experience the same problem that we have in the past. My question is, I'll give you a prime example. I have new neighbors across the street. They are from Massachusetts, they purchased the house, they're here every other weekend. Right now, they happen to be here for two weeks on a stretch. I'm going with the assumption they are considered residents, if they can come in and prove that they own the particular dwelling there, correct? And the same thing with the, there are several houses down the street that rent their property out to college students, I assume, and Louis Shaken said, I just wanted, for point of clarification, you realize that you had mentioned the residents as well, but if people can, you know, prove that they're owning property, or they're leasing property or renting property, they certainly are entitled to, to a residential sticker. So, thank you, and once again, thank you all for your, your fast work on this. It is appreciated.
David brings up a good point, that if you have any questions, just call in Town Hall, ask for the clerk, and we'll clarify anything that you need clarified. So is there a motion?
A motion, we adopt the ordinance...
Second reading.
Pardon me?
Second reading.
Second, yeah.
Certainly. Just one moment, I'm going to get the motion in a second.
Motion we adopt as a second reading for adoption, the Ordinance 2017-07, the expansion of the no parking areas, limited, limited parking areas.
Second.
There's a motion and a second?
Good evening.
Good evening, welcome.
We own a business, actually, it's, it's a bed and breakfast on 154 High Street, and for us to, we have people there every single day, and for us to come down here every day to get a tag for people is really not going to work. I mean, we have people every single day, 300 days a year.
Yeah, I did, actually, someone had brought that up to me today, and we have a plan, which I'd be happy to discuss with you, which I'm sure you're going to find perfectly acceptable.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, but when you, you come in to see us, and we'll work it through.
Our, our issue is not to restrict any of the businesses.
No.
It's just that people in this area, like Prudence Island, they come, they park for...
Absolutely.
You know, maybe, maybe your customers can't park...
No, I understand completely. It's just that for us to come down here every day to get a tag for all the people...
I'm sure they'll give you a...
And we're not, we're not going to know their license plate number or any information before they get there.
Right. I'm sure he'll give you just some...
We have, we have a plan to deal with you specifically with that, and I'm sure you'll find it perfectly acceptable.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay.
So there's a motion and a second. Andy?
Just one thing, I'd like, just like to echo Vice Chairman Sweeney's comments about addressing this long-term. I think this is solving an immediate problem, but also shifting the problem. We keep bringing up Prudence Islanders, and their parking demands aren't going away. They're going to continue to increase, and the people that used to park in these spots who aren't are going to park someplace else. And I know that the administrators worked hard to accommodate short-term, a small number of Prudence Islanders during the summertime, but we really need a long-term, comprehensive look at what the needs are today, and what they're going to be in a few years with new developments downtown, more businesses on High Street, more Prudence Islanders coming to, to visit the island and park in Bristol. And so I'm not aware of any initiative right now to do that, and I think it's important that this council prioritizes these parking demands highly, so that our visitors are welcome to the town of Bristol, as well as our residents being accommodated.
I have just this before, is, we can't expand Bristol either. The houses are there, the streets are there. We can't add streets. Bristol is, is a great town, because we're very attractive, we're abundant with events. We just experienced this past two weeks, but it's not just this two weeks, it's every week that we should be very proud to attract tourism and bring visitors from all over to park on our streets. So we can have workshops, but land is, is very scarce in Bristol. There was discussions of, you know, multi-level parking garages to be on a piece of parcel of land, but that comes with a cost, just being realistic as a council, that a lot of tourist cities that you go visit outside of Bristol, their mechanism is they actually charge. They, they have the meters, and, and when you start expanding and purchasing property on behalf of the residents, it comes with a cost. So I am, I have a positive attitude about expanding Bristol, and all our committees and have a vibrant town, but I'm also not naive to the fact that you just can't add streets and tell people to get rid of their houses just for additional parking. We, we do the best we can, like we're doing now, just like the business owner stated her concerns, and the town clerk addressed it right away, because we would address it. Everything's a learning curve here in Bristol, and I know we, as a council, will address those concerns day by day and look at every option, but I just wanted to say that let's not have conversations of, you know, trying to put something through a little garden hose. We just, I, I agree with my colleagues, but that's a conversation that, you know, might come with a cost also, and at the end of the day, so...
Well, great news. This council approved the administrator's hard work. We have a three-month short-term rental on that parking lot on the corner of Church and Thames. We have a yearly rental for the parking lot on the other corner of Church and Thames. We also have yearly access to Prudence Island residents, and we shouldn't pick on them, because they're not the only ones. But Prudence Island residents and visitors, there is yearly parking over there at a fee to them. So there are answers, but there is always more possibilities, and we'll take a look at those. So we have a motion and a second to approve, excuse me, to adopt second reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The, the next item is Ordinance 2000, it's Item C2, Ordinance 2017-8. This is something that was discussed at a previous meeting, and also came upon a recommendation from the Public Works Department to repeal a certain section of the, of the town code which requires a commercial trash account. This is the first reading.
Is there a motion?
Motion to constitute that this is the first reading?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Item C3, also a first reading. This is to amend the town code to prohibit dogs being present in certain special parks in the town.
Motion, this constitutes the first reading?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is Item C4, and this is Ordinance 2017-10. This is the first reading of this ordinance to create a coordinator of senior services position within the Department of Public Works and Public Parks and Recreation. Excuse me. It's the first reading.
Motion, this constitutes the first reading?
Second.
There's a motion and a second?
Discussion?
No.
None.
No, and the reason why is that first reading is exactly that, just the first reading. I like to call it a hear ye, hear ye, so everyone is aware that there will be discussion. Our next meeting is July 26th, so at the second reading, we will call for public hearing, and there will be discussion, just as there was a little bit earlier at our public hearing, to public hearing. So at this point, we won't have any discussion. The reason why is that we don't want to have two public hearings, and if your expectation out there in the public was that the discussion would happen at the second reading, to have it now would be inappropriate and unfair. So, and we have always, well, I shouldn't say that, for the past couple of years, we've been doing that, that way, so, but I think always...
Okay, well, you know, there, I, I'd just like to point out, my name is Ralph Kinder, and I'm here representing the senior center, the nonprofit senior center, that this ordinance will affect, also here representing the Benjamin Church Trust, which funds your senior facilities, and both of these organizations have not been at the table prior to this ordinance and the first reading, and we're sort of disappointed about that. We would like to come to the table and have a seat at the table with the administrator or whoever, and maybe you could tell us who we should come and talk to about these sorts of decisions that are being made for seniors without really any input.
I'm going to, the administrator would like to comment on this.
Mr. Chairman, there was a discussion, the director, who is our liaison with those agencies, was informed of the ordinance. That was going to be read today.
Friday, Friday afternoon, or morning, sorry.
Shortly after I received the, the draft ordinance to be read.
So in typical fashion, nothing will happen without discussion on it, open discussion in public. So our next meeting is the 26th. In the meantime, I'm sure that the administrator has been and would continue to be open to that, and so would I.
So Steve, does that mean I can give you a call?
I'm always available.
Terrific. Thanks.
So there's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay. The, the next item is Item D1, and this is the petition of Erin Meyer, doing business as Crate Escape Doggy Day Camp 15, Gooding Avenue, Unit 18, requests opportunity to have a dog kennel license. You have a recommendation provided by the Town Administrator and Chief of Police. I believe also that the Community Development Director points out that this particular establishment, in order to have this use, would have needed a special use permit, and they have been granted one from the zoning board, but only for a period of six months. Is that correct? Okay.
What's the distinction, Diane, for the six months, just to prove of...
Exactly, there were...
Positive outcomes?
Yeah, right, exactly, success. There were the residents' neighbors concerned at the public hearing at the zoning board, so the board granted six months from the time that they get all of their other permits, Town Council and State.
Gotcha.
So it's like our review as well, like when we do, you know, six months?
Right, exactly.
So Lou, this is my question about these licenses, because they can be tricky. So your guidance would be with contingent of the six-month special use permit, and this council granting, should it be contingent of a review after six months, or that way it just coincides because of that?
That would, that's the reason why I think it was important to know that, because obviously, I don't think it would be fair to the licensee to be thinking that there was a license that was extended further beyond that, and if the two things can be made together, and I think the council also has every anticipation that this will be a success and will be able to be continuing, but in order to, to keep everything in line, it would probably be make, make sense, excuse me, for that to, to be a condition.
So approve it, and then do the condition, is what you're saying?
So based, based on the recommendations of the department, as stated, we would approve the request for a dog kennel license with a special permit, with a review of six months?
Six months, I guess, from the, from the date of everything being concluded, so maybe from the date of, of the actual opening.
Of the special use permit that was granted by the zoning board.
So moved.
So there's a motion? Is there a second? Okay. Are you Erin Meyer?
I am.
Hi, welcome.
Hi.
Did you want to share anything? Sounds like it's going the right way, so... Sounds like it's going the right way, so.
Put what you're ahead, right?
Seriously, did you want to share? Actually, what we like to do in situations like this is give you 30 seconds for a wonderful commercial. The floor is yours?
No, there's no way.
No?
If I don't have to talk, I won't.
Okay, we wish you the best.
Yeah, we do. So we have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And I imagine, just one quick thing, I imagine on the license will be the limit of dogs, which is discussed throughout, so that will be on the license, correct Lou?
That's part of the recommendations, right?
Right, right.
The recommendations.
Just so that you're aware of that.
It may not be on the face because the licenses are relatively small, but it will be provided.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
So we're being clear now.
Right, exactly. The next item is item D2, and this is the petition of Lisa Bracken-Hastetler, doing business as Angelina's 301 Hope Street, requests council consideration for a vidling license. This is an existing establishment with a new owner. You have recommendations provided by the town administrator, fire chief, chief of police, economic development coordinator, and I also, oh, it's coming, there's some further recommendations on some of the other license requests, so that's the extent of the recommendations on D2.
Based on the department recommendations, I request that we, I move that we approve the vidling license.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Following from the same petitioner is a request for a sidewalk use license. The recommendations from the town administrator and chief of police are to approve with certain conditions. The town administrator and economic development coordinator to approve, the town administrator and director of public works to approve with conditions, and you do have an updated recommendation from the director of public works, and then you also have a late item recommendation from the town administrator and code compliance coordinator who also suggests approving with certain conditions.
So upon the compliance that was looked at by our compliance coordinator and the updated conditions of director of public works with the ADA clearance, upon all those conditions, along with the administration and all departments and approvals, that we approve the request for a sidewalk use license for Angelina's at 301 Hope Street.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And also from the same petitioner, you have a request for a holiday sales license, and you have recommendations from the fire chief, town administrator, chief of police, and economic development coordinator, all to approve.
Based on the recommendations of the departments, I make a motion to approve the holiday sales license.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is the petition of Charles Kamara, Fire Research and Technology, requests council consideration for a private investigator's license. You have the recommendation of the town administrator and chief of police to approve.
Motion to approve the private investigation, investigator's license.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, is item D6, and this is the petition of Jennifer Cavallaro, doing business as the Beehive Cafe, 10 Franklin Street, requests a one-day expansion of the Class EV Limited Intoxicating Beverage License to include a premises of the adjacent Grasmere store, sidewalk area for the 10th anniversary celebration to be held on July 30th, 2017. You have recommendations provided by the director of public works, who's suggesting for various reasons to deny the petition. You have recommendation of the fire chief to approve, the economic development coordinator to approve, and the chief of police to approve with certain conditions.
Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Cavallaro.
Welcome.
Thank you. So I understand that there's been a little back and forth about this, but the DPW is against. Would you like to ask me any questions about our plan?
I would just like to know exactly what you're planning to do. I mean, you're planning to have like a party there?
It's just, yeah, it's going to be from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM, and what we wanted to do is have everything downstairs and outside so that if we closed the sidewalk from the beginning of our property, the Beehive property, to basically that white garbage area, which is the end of Grasmere, that we could contain, if we barrier, had a barrier that was controlled, then we could sell tickets and control people coming in and out, and that it would all take place outside, and we could move or put the bar underneath on the patio where the tent is now. The idea just bringing to have everybody in one place and nobody running up and downstairs trying to get drinks upstairs and bringing them up and down, we just didn't think that would work very well. And there's just going to be food everywhere and some music, not a band, but just pipe to music sort of thing. That's the idea.
My two reservations was exactly what was addressed of the Grasmere, and with all due respect, you know, I would expect your application, and also if they're going to be going into that establishment, they would have to come and fill out their application also because they're a separate business. It's in the same, you know, vicinity, but by right of, I believe, and maybe if someone wants to correct me, that I believe each applicant, when they're requesting this, if it's going to be in their location, would have to do their separate request. I understand you're doing it on their behalf. That was my first reservation. The other reservation was the porta potty in reference to the sidewalk. Is it going to be placed on the sidewalk where there isn't clearance for walking, or is it on the grass area of the sidewalk?
Well, we were thinking of putting it on this, we thought it'd be probably more stable just on the street at the bottom where we're going to have the barriers come around it, see what I mean? So that if the barrier comes, say, out from Grasmere's front door, and then onto the street, maybe two feet, three feet, and then up to ours, then there would be, the porta potties could actually be on the street. But we would be closing the sidewalk, the reason being, because of the alcohol being served, we want to control who's in that space and who isn't in that space. That was the point. And I have gone to my insurance company for an event license and explained that we would have to put the town and Grasmere on my insurance for that night, for that day, for the liquor liability. That was, it's just to include them in, it just makes it an easier location. I just feel the Beehive itself doesn't lend itself to this kind of event physically inside the building.
Absolutely. Michael, did you understand my question?
Yes, especially with regard to the other business establishment. Have we confirmed that they're okay with this?
Oh, yeah, we've been planning this together. I didn't, if they had, if I had been told that they needed to do a separate application, they would have done it. Nobody actually said that to me. They're not running it, they're just were, they said, no, if you, I suppose we could, just trying to think how this would work, we could close off their space completely, we just make the space a lot smaller, which isn't ideal, but no one told me that they need to do a separate application. I was more worried about making sure the insurance and the event license was, you know, going to cover them too.
So the police recommendation is that only the area in front of the Beehive be closed off, not the Grasmere, so if you were to impose that condition, that would, that issue would go away?
You don't want to have, you don't want to just put in a request for a piece of the park, a little piece of Independence Park? It wouldn't be easier to just have it in one location like that than to try to close off the street?
Well, then we're running up and down the street with food. That becomes, that just becomes complicated, I think, to have the food out on the park for that many people. It just makes it a little more, I hadn't actually even thought about that, but it just, to have like a designated area in the park, you mean, with barriers or something?
I was just thinking of that, as this, like, as I read through the recommendations, and I'm trying to envision, you know, because you're not going to be able to, you're not proposing to close off the whole of Franklin Street, you're proposing like a piece of it, right? The sidewalk and a piece of where the park, like, where people would park, like that strip.
Just that strip where there would be cars, we don't want any cars there. Basically trying to keep it all close to where we have the kitchens clearly, and the cold beer and all that, and the ice machines and that kind of thing, to move it. And then sort of atmosphere-wise too, it is about the Beehive's 10th anniversary, so we're trying to sort of make it be, feel Beehive-y. To put it into the park, I think, would be sort of, I think it would feel odd.
It makes sense. I mean, obviously, we're happy to have you for this many years, and we're trying to work with you.
Yeah, I understand.
With your anniversary celebration. It's just, we've always approached these things with the most, with safety, not only for the town, but for your business and your visitors and the people that are going to attend, which brings me to, I know, work area protections for construction and whatnot. Is this a similar fashion of when we would put sawhorses on part of the street where people will be standing and people coming up Franklin Street with their car? Is that compliant to regulation for any state or town situation when it's set up like that? Do we, I know I'm asking these questions, I'm just worried about the safety and the compliance, that, you know, I want to be supportive of this, I just want to cover all those things.
It's not a construction site or anything like that, as you know, but it's definitely a concern. We put cement blocks so no one climbs the sidewalk, and we're not even doing it, saying intentionally, accidentally. We've had more accidents accidentally by someone stepping on the gas versus the brake, someone taking a sharp corner. Those are all the concerns. We like to keep it exactly where it's controlled, where it's normally not going to happen, it could, but if there are vehicles parked there, someone jumped the sidewalk, there's a likelihood they'll hit the car before they get there and stop and slow down, and that's a good-sized area to start allowing people to consume alcohol. As you know, I'm all for a business having it right in front of their business, as we do through downtown. It's been working pretty good, knock on wood, but I think if we continue to allow it to go a little further down, we may be creating a little bit of a problem, and the liability is there for anyone, and I understand it's an insurance policy. But guess what? Where the individuals that are going to be in court testifying how this happened, if someone got seriously hurt or, God forbid, killed, not the insurance company, they're just going to pay off, we have to explain it, and we have to live with it too, if we make that decision and it happens. That's where I stand with it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Ms. Cavallaro, first of all, congratulations on your success.
Thank you.
It's fantastic that you've been able to start and grow your business and expand it in Bristol, and it's a wonderful restaurant and bakery you have, and.
Thank you.
And the way you involve other organizations is fantastic, and so congratulations. I'm in full support of the request from the applicant, and I think providing a police detail is, it seems like you've agreed to.
Yeah.
Hire a police detail, I think that's necessary, but I'm in full support of this, and I'd be glad to make a motion to grant the one-day expansion of the EV Limited Intoxicating Beverage license of the applicant.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion?
I can't support the motion just for the fact that I believe Grasmere should be part of this application in a way where that expansion of what you're approving is incorporated with this application, because number one, I think it would be more palatable to have that size that's requested versus just in front of your establishment. And I am, I said I'm in support and I'm trying to work with it, but again, I have a proven track record to work with every business, but I just think that everything has to be in order and everything has to be in safety precautions, so I don't know if my colleague can change the motion to include that, but if it's not part of a certain protocol that should be submitted, I can't support it.
Well, it seems that the applicant has testified that Grasmere is fully aware and maybe even in support of this, you've worked together on this, and.
Yeah, we have.
And the way that you're on the agenda tonight for this extension, and I'm not aware of them submitting any testimony in opposition to this to the clerk or to any of the council members, or, so in light of that, and I think this is a fantastic celebration that we should all participate in.
But can I just ask, I mean, Steve is the owner of the building completely, right? So, I mean, he's here. The issue that the, I think there's two issues. One is the extension of like a liquor license to an establishment that is not a bar restaurant that doesn't have a liquor license, and I don't know, I would leave it up to the solicitor to say if we can just, you know, they can be on the street doing that. The other is a concern the chief raises, I think it is, is closing off the street, not the sidewalk part and not allowing the parking, because now you're going to have people venturing out halfway into Franklin Street potentially. I mean, is it possible to do it without that?
I think we were, I was thinking that it would be safer if we didn't have cars coming and going, that's really the, we don't necessarily need that, what, five feet wide, four feet wide space. I was thinking just insulating the event from cars coming and going by just not having any parking there, and also not using cones, but actual, I'd prefer to get the metal barriers so it's really clear when you come around the corner, ribbons and balloons or whatever, that you're not going to park, those four parking spots or whatever it is are going to not be useful for those four hours, and that, that was in my head how it was going to work, would be really big barriers, and then the police detail there.
So are you envisioning people, I think somewhere, I think I read, like 250 people you were going to hope to have? Is that just coming and going?
Yeah, coming and going. They won't, there's no way everyone would.
There's no way you could fit in that area.
They're not going to turn up at 4:00 and, no, it'll just be, that's the number of tickets we're going to have.
So you're doing it by tickets, and so you're going to have a maximum?
Absolutely, yeah. We have wristbands for purchase, for if you, when you come in with your ticket, you'll be given a wristband, and if you are carded and you are over 21, you will get the second one so that you can buy alcohol.
So is buying alcohol, or are you giving the alcohol for free?
Giving it, no, not giving, don't put that out there, no, it's not free. The food's going to be free. It's, it'll be $15 a ticket and lots of food and a cash bar.
So the ticket buys the food?
The ticket buys the food.
Okay.
So there's not going to be likely an abundance of like overly, like not going to be free alcohol out there?
No, not at all, no, and it'll be a lot of families anyway. I think they'll come in, they'll have their picture taken, we're going to have the logo made with the bee face not in it, so you can put your face in the bee, and there'll be a lot of things for children.
It's going to be exciting.
That's how we envision it.
So we don't have these events all the time, and I'm just wondering, again, looking for some guidance, if you have the same setup and only have the residents that have to park over there and close down that half of Franklin Street for four hours?
It'd be safer.
We do it for construction.
The whole street, you mean?
From Hope to Thames, close down Franklin Street for four hours, and that way we have the safety covered, and we can make this happen and actually have more convenience for your people and have more of an atmosphere that people will feel like it's their own party, I mean.
I didn't, I thought this was going to be, that's funny, because that's what we originally were thinking, but then we realized that we would, we don't need to inconvenience any driveway if we just cut off the point around us. We're not inconveniencing any of our neighbors, not, not any, everybody has their own off-street parking on Franklin, just luckily for me, but they also wouldn't be inconvenienced by this.
It doesn't happen all the time, and this is a special occasion, and like my colleague said, if there's going to be a detail, why not just, I would be in more favor of just closing that portion for four hours of Franklin Street and celebrate your business.
Maybe we do that for the 11th anniversary?
One at a time, please.
But even when you say, like, you envision mostly families, that makes, I thought about the same thing when I read this, about just that section of Franklin, now you say you envision families, like, now you're going to have all like kids there, and you're going to have this little blocked-off area, and then there's going to be cars going up and down.
To be honest, at $15, we're not going to discount price for, because we do not want actually to have too many small children, but there are a lot of families that come that have actually grown up, coming and eating at the Beehive, so we think that there will be quite a lot of older children, but they're going to have to pay the $15 for the children, so that was our way of not having a ton of like toddlers or anything like that.
I mean, because it does sound like.
It's meant, it is, but sort of meant to be a kind of cocktail party.
This sounds a little dangerous, like if there are kids though, you know, in a, like a cordoned-off area with cars going at least even one way. I mean, you'd have to determine what to do for the people who live there, you'd either have to like put a notice or give them tickets or.
Oh, we're definitely going to give them tickets, but we're not getting, the plan that we put before you was because we felt it was just getting too big, having the street closed and all the rest of it. I'm not against it at all, but what's what we thought, and also because of everybody having, by closing what we had given you a diagram of, nobody would be in fact. nobody would be in fact, first of all, it's easy to control, so the alcohol doesn't leave the area, doesn't go down onto the park or around the corner or anything, because there'll be somebody there looking at the wristbands and they can't leave with the alcohol in their hand. We felt if the street was closed, it would sort of get a little bit less easy to control. But I, I mean, I'm open to that suggestion.
I certainly think that if the street is closed, maybe you can, you said you wanted those barricades, maybe have a little form of feet.
Right, right.
And it's going to be enclosed.
Right.
So your plan will still work, I just, the safety will be, you know, addressed.
Sure.
And I think it will be more accommodating. We're spending a lot of conversation, because we talk about this, because this council and previous councils took a lot of conversations when it comes to alcohol for our businesses or public property and whatnot, because, and I don't think there's ever been a problem. I just think with this one, I just had some reservations on the safety and, like my colleague said, if it's part of the motion of the testimony that Grashmire is in approval of this, that's fine. But as far as the safety, I would like a motion that would include the shutdown of Franklin Street and the detail. And you would have more flexibility, I think, with your barricade to have more suitable area for your guests.
So a couple of things, if I may. First one, I agree with what was already said in regards to, congratulations on 10 years.
Thank you.
Thank you for being there. I also think that this is an appropriate celebration, but I do believe in what was addressed earlier by you, Councilor Stewart, in saying that it needs to stay within that area. And I'm happy, and I think this is a wonderful event and would continue to be that way. I truly do believe it needs to be that way. And I also think that this conversation that we had about closing the street would probably need an additional meeting because it wasn't advertised as closing the street, it was advertised as using this area. I don't think we ever spoke about, and you can correct me if I'm wrong here, but we never talked about closing the street.
Yeah.
So, and I don't think it's an inappropriate or inappropriate conversation, I just think it's, we never talked about that part of it.
I'm not sure it's necessary.
Okay, alright.
But the solicitor might want to weigh in.
No, I mean.
If it was a permanent closure, it'd be a different story.
But I don't want to go too down the rabbit hole.
No, no, no.
I think this is a neat event. I think where was, where was suggested is appropriate.
There's plenty of between, if part of the motion is to have the applicant notify everyone at the time, the date, the hours, I think you're good.
Okay, alright. Chief?
I hope they're all going to be there.
Yes, there will be a couple of things that will obviously need to be done. We'll need to post that area, okay? Because if someone parks there, they don't expect their vehicle to have people sitting on it, putting a glass of wine, beer, whatever it may be on it. And obviously, we'll need to have police presence on both corners. There's alcohol, I don't want alcohol going up and down Thames Street, Hope Street, anywhere around there. I totally understand that they're going to have people checking that, but as you know, and when we assign the people to the British Car Show, to any place where they're serving alcohol, we need to have police presence there. I don't, we don't want to run into an issue with that. As we know, there are citizens in that area that, and residents that are cooperative, but it's only going to take one that doesn't agree with this. You know that when we have issues with the church events.
Yep.
We need to take that all into consideration.
Well, that was, that was kind of what I was trying to do, was avoid in any way inconveniencing the people on Franklin Street. Because quite honestly, after two weeks of your summer being, you know.
Crazy.
Really inconvenienced by the concerts, which are wonderful, but.
Yes, they are.
It is irritating being on Franklin Street, the one street that's closed down. So I was trying to just have this thing that didn't, you know, that A was really controlled, it was just a 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. finished thing, that we knew no one was going to leave our premises with alcohol. That was the point of not closing the entire street. And also sort of atmosphere-wise, you know, people closer together makes more of a party.
A little more intimate, right.
Otherwise, it's sort of like dissipates.
Gotcha.
And I just had a question about weather. Is it rain or shine?
Rain or shine.
Okay.
Yeah.
And just to be clear, we are, where the motion that's on the table is to move forward with the plan that's stated, that was stated here, not to close Franklin?
Yes, and just to be clear, I cannot vote for that. I definitely can vote for it in front of your establishment directly, 100%, but not the additional spot. So just in front of your, so said another way, the recommendations of the police department, follow those, I'm in 100% support of that.
Okay, great.
But not in front of, tell me the business's name again, please, Gracia? Am I saying that correct?
Grashmire.
Grashmire, thank you.
I think that you would need to close down either way, like, your, I think you need to cordon off your area so it stays small, even if the street is closed all the, like, in both corners, because you want to contain the group. I could even see a scenario where, you know, like, if somebody was coming in or out of their home, they could get by if you're going to have police at both corners. But just the, to me, even if you have, like, a fence, I mean, we did this on Hope Street for dedication on Memorial Day. And I mean, it was well-controlled, but I mean, there were many, many police officers there. And, I mean, your street is not as busy as the middle of Hope Street. But, I mean, you know, to have people in the street with two-way traffic still going around you, to me, seems dangerous, it really does. I mean, I think you should fence in your area so you have a sense of where your party is. But if the town is willing to close down that section for a short time, even if it lets the cars that just live there in and out, I think it's a lot more controlled than just having.
I think I'm getting a little confused, so if we.
How about this?
About what? Because if we close, if we close from Hope to Franklin, I mean, Hope to Thames, the whole street, in other words, but then we're only allowed alcohol outside the front of the Beehive, that doesn't make any sense.
I think there's a lot of dialogue going on, and, Mr. Chairman, I think maybe this motion should go.
Exactly what I was just.
And I think you might like the outcome. I'm just speculating.
So Councilman Tiska, your motion was to approve what was put in front of us, which is the expansion, a one-day expansion of Class BV Limited Intoxicating Beverage License premises to include the adjacent Grashmire store property and sidewalk areas for the 10th anniversary. So it includes, that was your motion, correct?
It includes, the event includes that area.
Exactly as presented.
Correct, and obviously also taking into account the recommendations from our police chief relating to alcohol in the neighboring building not, not being allowed. But that is a condition, a recommendation from our police chief.
Alright, I seconded the motion.
So the existing motion was the original applicant's request.
Correct.
Would be Beehive and Grashmire, the porta potty, and the four-foot increment with the barricade, but have flowing traffic west and east of Franklin, ongoing 4 to 8, rain or shine on July 30th.
Correct.
So following all recommendations as proposed?
Yes.
Okay, so we, exactly the way presented, following where?
Not recommendations, one recommendation is only now, it's not recommendation.
Grashmire wasn't part of the recommendation.
Okay.
The police chief only was.
But that is the motion. That is the motion including.
So you're not going to say, yeah, right.
Okay, so there's your clarity. So it does, it's as requested, how's that?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, as requested, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, is there a new motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to grant the request contingent upon other conditions requested by the applicant, that the alcohol of the beer and wine only be granted in front of the Beehive Cafe, and also Grashmire, as testified by the applicant, that we can get just a letter of intent from that owner on file with the town clerk, contingent upon that, that, I'm not doubting that, but just for formalities of our documents and protocol.
Absolutely.
I firmly believe you, but I think I'll just make it easier. And not to exceed west past Grashmire and not to exceed past east of the Beehive in a confined area that which will be barricaded and have people checking once there is an entrance to that barricade. And I will even propose to close down between 4 and 8 with proper posting of signage for respect to those residents that have to park with themselves and their visitors accordingly on Franklin through our police department, along with a police detail that will be conversed with the town clerk, the administration, and the police department with the applicant that is needed for the celebration. Also, that expansion, you said four feet past the sidewalk, I think I would be more entertaining of another four feet because you have the whole road. So if you want to expand it a little, by all means, but just keep the perimeter east to west, not to go the whole road, but just to make it accommodating. And that, that would be my motion.
So you're saying contain the party, but also stop the traffic?
Correct.
The road will be closed between 4 and 8, rain or shine on July 30th from Hope Street.
Can I just ask a question about what that entails in terms of numbers of policemen that I'm required to have for that, to have the traffic, just for cost reasons? Because I know I need, I need one person already. I just want to know how many police I need to close the whole road.
We'll, we'll look at it, but it would probably be no more than three and probably two.
Probably two.
I believe the original motion did have a police detail, was it just one?
That's correct, because it was just in front of there, just an officer there to make sure that everybody would be orderly, that there would be no interference, no serving of any minors, all the above.
I think that's a safer plan.
So we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there a discussion?
I just want to make sure that the applicant is clear.
I'm not.
And is that, is that acceptable for you?
I think I'm clear that, basically, the, we're going to shut the traffic down anyway, but I'm going to create a kind of cordon around what I want.
Right.
It has to be enclosed, yes.
Crossed in a Beehive, and it has to be enclosed. And we'll get a letter from Grashmire to confirm that they're part of the whole event.
Any additional police detail and costs to that?
Yeah, I need to look at that.
Just need you.
I need to know that pretty quickly, yeah.
You need to be clear on that, okay.
You'll know first thing tomorrow, sometime before noon time, we'll have an officer stop in and get a number where he or she could reach you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
And even though the safety is a concern, Chief, I think we understand the circumstances and accommodations of the cost that are a concern of you and everyone involved with this event.
I mean, we would be closing down the road, right? We need to sawhorses or whatever, we'd be providing those. Right, yeah, yeah.
So we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations.
It's the biggest motion I've ever heard.
It's a long one. He's got his eyes dotted and his teeth crushed.
The only thing I'm missing was a second.
Uh, my second.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, that's a lot of motion. Next item is the private investigator license renewals for 2017, 2018. And you have a recommendation from the town administrator and chief of police to approve.
Motion to approve as stated.
Second. There's a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next is the petition of Kathleen Segwin on behalf of the Bristol Merchants Association requests for closure of State Street between Hope and Thames Street to hold a State Street Fair event September 23rd, 2017. You have the recommendation of the town administrator and chief of police to approve with certain conditions, and also the director of public works to also approve with certain conditions.
Based on the department recommendations, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Is there any 30-second commercial that you'd like to do?
Yeah.
Oh, no, we can't talk about that. I'm just kidding.
You are not to go two feet past the easterly corner post of, no, I'm a leak.
Yeah, I'll give you both of them. At this time, I recommend, this is from the police department, from the chief, at this time, I recommend the petition is requested, wrong page.
To conduct the above-mentioned event to be granted.
At this time, I recommend the petition is requested to conduct the above-mentioned event to be granted. The petition is granted provided that all ordinance and laws pertaining, right? And then Kevin, I recommend, sorry, Director McBride from DPW, I recommend the DPW be contacted several days prior to the event, final placement of road horses and all of that, to make sure that everything is done correctly. So very, very appropriate and, okay?
It also says, though, that it should be also noted that a 48-inch, 88-clear area for pedestrian accessibility must be maintained at all times, so he'll take care of all of that.
Does that make sense?
You're not asking to close down the dock, though, right? Or are you?
If you, actually, if you don't mind coming up to, thank you.
I mean, I support this, I liked that event, we used to have it in the past, it's just, I thought you said, I thought I read somewhere that you were looking for both the, you were looking for State Street dock to be closed as well?
We were looking at the time to have the dock closed off, depending on how many vendors we were able to bring in. We have a map laid out as to how many vendors we can squeeze in onto State Street, but if we went over that, we would like to be able to put them on the dock too, and based on the traffic, we weren't sure if it was easier to close it down, or if there was a way to cordon off a specific area of that.
My concern would be.
Come on, Greg.
Closing that dock would be hard and challenging for the working fishermen on the pier, so.
Alright, hold on one second.
The chief. The chief concurs.
I mean, alright, so is it not a possibility to close off the dock that day?
Well, I don't know what my colleagues think, but it was just mentioned by our director of, what do we call you? Sewer and sanitation, water pollution?
Superintendent of wastewater pollution.
See, that is absolutely perfect. I think this is a wonderful suggestion, is that we have a municipal lot there, we could make that available to you when the, when that is all closed off, and you can use that area.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right, right over at the hair salon, right?
What are my colleagues thinking?
That is a great compromise.
As you can hear, we're here to help.
Well, I do think that you'd have to check, like, the, because there are businesses that use that during the day, you know, especially on a Saturday, it's kind of busy in September. The other thing I think is that between now, you have a couple of council meetings between now and the event actually happening, so you'd have an idea of how many vendors you have. Like, if there's like an overwhelming, like, excitement and crush of people that want to be there, I think you could come back to us and say, we don't know if we're going to be able to fit everybody.
Okay.
Or sometimes you've been to places where they, they put another row down, I don't know if it'd be allowable with a fire, but another row of vendors, maybe down the middle of the street.
Yeah, we already have that written into the map.
You do, okay, yeah. So, I mean, you can always come back if you, if you feel like you need more space and we could figure it out. But right now, we think we have, you have the lot and the street.
No, that's fair.
Be like kiosk going down the middle of State Street, like the mall.
So we have a motion and a second to approve. Tim, would you amend your motion to include the municipal parking lot that is on State Street, that lower portion that is going to be closed off?
Similar.
Is there a second on that amendment?
Second.
Is there any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent.
Thank you.
Wish you the best. Good luck.
I do, I do just want to just say, though, I know the town could do something about the State Street dock, only because, like, the hair salon is busy, New Leaf is busy, State Street dock, only because, like, the hair salon is busy, New Leaf is busy, and a lot of their customers, they may have a wedding that day, if this is a Saturday, that you find some alternate parking for their customers, and that may be on the dock, even if they don't have a sticker that Luke could work something out for you.
Yeah, they worked on, when we did this event before, we worked with the city's citizens, they're all part of DNA, so they're aware of that is going on.
Good luck.
All right, thank you.
Exciting. You're welcome.
The next item is the petition of David Barboza, owner of 121 Franklin Street, request council consideration to declare property located at 123 Franklin Street as a blighted property.
So before you start, Dave, I spoke with the solicitor a little bit earlier, and I actually am going to refer to him right now, and maybe we're referring, but if you could just kind of give this council a little bit of clarity on this one?
Sure, and I actually just briefly...
Not on this property, but more generally speaking about blighted.
I spoke to David. This is actually not something within the council's jurisdiction. It's either within the jurisdiction of administration in terms of Ray Falco's office, et cetera, and/or perhaps even the redevelopment agency, if this is even covered in their jurisdiction. But my recommendation is going to be, I think David wanted to bring it to everyone's attention, my recommendation is going to be to refer it. I believe there's actually a meeting taking place on Monday at the site to review it. I'll then follow up with Steve, and whatever legal action may need to be taken, we'll certainly do so. But I would recommend this be a receive and file, because you, as a council, cannot make such a declaration.
Okay, so I'm going to allow just a bit of discussion, but can I have a motion to receive and file?
Similar.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Okay. Once again, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. I hope you all had a very enjoyable Fourth of July. If I could just digress for a moment to publicly thank the Fourth of July Committee, as well as the police fire DPW, for once again doing a fantastic job and continuing to make Bristol America's most patriotic town, so hats off to all of you for a job well done. Regarding this issue, also thank you to town administrator Steve Contenti and code compliance officer Ray Falco, because there have been ongoing problems at this location for the last couple of months, basically since the fire at the restaurant, with trash being piled up on the property, trash being piled up on the street, bins being left out for weeks on end, the grass not cut until it got five feet tall, and one mentioned to Steve, and the grass was cut within an hour, so we certainly appreciate it. Wood Street, as you all know, through the efforts of Mosaiaco CDC and the town council and the town administrator, is in a renaissance in so many ways. They're continuing to upgrade the property, the promotion of business, the addition of Fred Pacheco Square, and I recently came from a meeting a few weeks ago with Walter Burke and Diane Campbell regarding doing some renovations over at Mosaiaco Park. Historically, the neighbors take pride in that neighborhood, and even East Bay CDC, which was conducive to the character of the neighborhood when it was constructed many years ago. Also a beautifully maintained church, upholding the traditions of the Azores and the religious feasts. But, as has been pointed out, there are problems, and if it just take a minute to go through the photos that I gave to you, and, you know, the first one is square in the middle of this beautiful area, and thankful to the council that 16 months ago, this, the building that was on fire in the crapped shape was finally torn down, I know, at the town's expense, and putting a lien on the property. But what you see there is horrible. You've got a fenced-in area with a blue tarp covering a floor with a basement that exists underneath, it's overgrown with weeds. As you can see, there's a bucket that's in there, and that's just completely unsightly. If you go to, and to add insult to injury, now we've got this property at 123 Franklin Street, which you can see on the first picture that I told you, showed you, rather, is a property in disrepair. I understand a blighted building, and this is, what you see there is typical of what you'd see in an inner-city neighborhood. There's approximately four by five feet, which would be, I'm sorry, four by six feet, or five by six feet, which would be 30 square foot of a cardboard barricaded window. Same thing above the window, above the doors, electrical wires hanging down. If you look at the next photo, that's a photo of the wire that's coming down and the condition of it. The other picture that I have there is, the windows are all rotting into place. And if you go look at the building, it's a ramshackle, it's a shack. It's a shack in the middle of a beautiful neighborhood. I know that this council is in a difficult situation. I believe the property owner is a foreign national. The person who is supposedly managing the property lives outside of Boston, but as far as the neighborhood is concerned, enough is enough. It's not something you'd want to see on Hope Street, not something you want to see on High Street, it's not something you want to see anywhere in the town of Bristol. It's basically a neglected piece of property. Now, I went to the extreme and asked that it be blighted. Certainly, if that is not within the council's jurisdiction, all I'm asking is that some plan of action come forward with the cooperation of the town administrator's office, who's been very cooperative, the code compliance officers of the council and the solicitor, to get this property cleaned up. I don't think it's too much to ask that, you know, we put up with this, and especially that ramshackle building, which is, I won't say that on the record for publication, but it's a building in need of repair, and whatever the council and the town can do, we certainly be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Dave, do you want this packet's back?
No, they're all yours for your late-night perusal. I could assume at this point that we will be moving forward with some sort of action, correct? Okay.
Next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, is item F3, also from Mr. Barboza, and also Halsey Harrisoff of 125 Hope Street, request for establishment of a commission to study feasibility of the deregionalization of the Bristol Warren Regional School District.
Well, Mr. Chairman and members of the council, I might start this off by saying that I believe the resolution of our difficulties brought upon us by the Supreme Court decision, shifting a lot of the financial burden from Warren to Bristol, is one of the most important matters of your term in office this time, because it's such a serious problem to us. And as you may have seen where I wrote some about this, I feel that not only do we now have a serious problem of millions of dollars of extra costs to our taxpayers, but we also have the threat of a Warren council and populace emboldened by the Supreme Court decision for them to go hunting for even more money from us. So I think that we need to do everything possible to analyze the details of this dilemma, and to work towards as rapidly as is effectively possible a solution. My recommendation, as you know, has been to divorce the combination of Bristol and Warren schools, and whether that is eventually what's done or something else, we certainly want the right solution to come forward. I would like to say that the subsequent proposal put forth to shift the authority on Bristol's school funding to a separate group, say, the school committee or some other, is a very bad idea. You all know, as well as I do, that it's a very vital fiduciary responsibility of the town council of Bristol to decide what money we spend and how we spend it. And I think it would be a gross injustice to our taxpayers if, for any reason, that mandated fiscal requirement were abrogated and passed on to some other group. I also think that another fallacy of the proposal is that it would, in fact, further empower Warren to place their further burden upon us. So I'm seriously and ardently opposed to that latter recommendation, and I hope that in the end you'll turn it down firmly. Well, I think David has some further enlightenment that he'd like to convey to you, and I defer to him now, and might come back once, with your permission.
Thank you, Halsey. When regionalization was first proposed, I was a staunch supporter. The benefits of our future education of our youth in both the communities of Bristol and Warren were certainly evident after consideration of all of the facts. There are some who continue to state that we didn't get everything we were promised, and that is correct. We actually got more. Time has proven that this was the right decision to regionalize, up until this court decision. As part of the consideration to regionalization was a known fact that the town of Warren was having great difficulty in paying for the education of their students. They couldn't do it then, they continue to complain about it year after year, and honestly, they can't afford to pay for it now. One of the main concerns when regionalization was discussed was how to bridge any divide between the students and the teachers from separate towns. This was never an issue, because they got it. It was one district. The problem always lie at the feet of some members of government and the taxpayers who don't. As you're well aware, I had the honor and challenge of being the chairman of the Bristol Warren Regional Joint Finance Committee for 10 years. Knowing the intricate details of funding the district has given me great insight into that process, and I certainly commend Councilor Tiska for taking on that challenge in his first year in office. It's not easy, Andy, and you did a great job this year. There are some in Warren who will say that Bristol never gave consideration to their financial woes. When I was chairman of the Joint Finance Committee, I always made it a point to meet legally with a representative of that town to gauge exactly what they thought they could afford, and do my best to impart that on members of the committee. There were many years that Bristol certainly could have afforded to appropriate more educational funds, but always deferred to Warren. So the talk that I always hear that Bristol has thrown Warren under the bus is totally false. The funding formula that was proposed in the original legislation, the enabling legislation that created the district, was quite clear in regard to each town's obligation. You took the total cost of education, less any aid to education and funds received, divided it by the number of students each town paid, and then each town paid the appropriate amount they owed, depending on how many students were enrolled in their town. It's not rocket science. Bristol historically has always and correctly paid the most, as we had the highest number of students. That was always the intent. So here we are, so many years into regionalization, that worked, and the town of Warren through this legal loophole is now, in practice, violating the spirit and intent of the legislation, costing the taxpayers of Bristol billions of dollars more. Certainly a clever move on their part, but once again, it is typical of the fact that they don't get this is one district. When we receive, or Warren receives, aid to education, I think that speaks for itself. It's aid to education, and should be applied to education. It shouldn't be aid to education given back to each town to use for sidewalks, sewers, the fire department, or the police department. It's aid to education. Certainly, there, you know, the court has issued its ruling, that is the law, but once again, at the risk of being redundant, it's in violation of the spirit that created regionalization. So we have a couple of ways we can go here. Either go back and see if we can change the enabling education, enabling legislation, which could be an effort in futility, or, as I hear on the street, for more people, after my letter was published in the Bristol Phoenix and Warren Times, as well as Halsey's, people in Bristol are fed up. I think we need to look at deregionalization, look at the entire picture, what is it going to cost us to deregionalize down the road instead of continue to subsidize the town of Warren, because that's exactly what it boils down to. And, you know, we all want to play nice in the sandbox, but we have not been treated fairly. Warren, in my opinion, has looked a gift horse in the mouth. So certainly, I think a smart move would be to establish a commission, look at exactly what would happen if we had to deregionalize, and then make an informed decision, and bring it to the taxpayers in the form of a ballot question on what they want to do.
I might, with your permission, just add a little something to the latter part of David's remarks. The judgment of what we do, of course, should place the welfare of the students at the top of the considerations and the motives. We want to continue the fine trend of this school department to improve the level of education, and I think the situation of the schools in most respects, it's gotten much better. We don't want to lose any of that. But I think that, as a practical matter, Warren has less involvement in it than Bristol. We have very fine school properties, we have the superintendent's office in Bristol, we have high school, and in my view, a separation could be done. No divorce, whether it's in a family or in a business, is easy, but it can be done. And of course, the investigation and correct calculation of the financial comparison is key to what we want to do. So I think that if you were to appoint the group that suggested, that we'd want to be sure that it wasn't too big a group to become a big debating society, but a big enough group to be representative of all the issues that involve serving the children right, and also to be represented by very good financial analysis capabilities. So I join Dave in urging you to establish such a group, and to empower it in whatever way the council feels appropriate, and to give it not too long a deadline.
Thank you. So a couple of things.
One more comment.
Actually, before you do, a couple of things. First, this council has spent a lot of time working on this issue. In fact, we've had some, a multiple executive session. In fact, if you look at this agenda, L1 is request for executive session, Bristol Warren Regional School District litigation. That executive session has included conversations with the solicitor to talk about what our legal options are. Where can we go from here? As you both know, because you were both on the council and both sat in multiple executive sessions, policy does not happen in executive session. So said another way, these dialogues have to happen in public. We're also very clear, this council is very clear on the record, is saying that we need conversations with the school committee, we need conversations with the town of Warren. There's a lot of things that need to be considered. I, for one, and I, certainly my colleagues can speak for themselves, but I'm taking nothing off the table until looking at it. I think it's our responsibility. Your suggestion for a commission has a lot of merit, and it's certainly, Councilor Tiska and myself had a conversation with the superintendent recently, and representation from Warren along with the town administrator, and that was not the council, that was myself, as I said, Councilor Tiska, the administrator, and we've had dialogues about where do we go from here, and what are the opportunities out there? And part of this discussion was deregionalization. I, for myself, are, if you'd asked me four years ago, I would have clearly told you that deregionalization was not the appropriate choice.
I agree.
But I'm on my fifth year on the council, and what was not a possibility four years ago is now a possibility in my head. I think it's a possibility in all of our heads, but I say it that way that we are considering everything. We, myself included, will look at all of this, take this under advisement, know that this is a possibility that I think is very appropriate. I do believe that moving forward in whatever we're doing needs to happen right away, but know this, we have not been sitting here idle.
No.
And nor did you suggest such a thing.
No, we didn't suggest that, and certainly, Halsey and I can appreciate all of the work that's gone on behind the scenes. We just wanted to give you one more tool in your toolbox to be able to use, and just to quote what you just said, the time to do it is now, and have it in case you need it in the future. The structure that Halsey and I suggested for that commission, which is just a suggestion, if you're one of you follows a similar group that I believe was around 2001, or the early 2000s, that I sat in on, actually, I believe I was probably the vice chairman of that group, which was very diverse, based on what you see there, because, once again, we were having issues with the town of Warren, and we were looking at the big picture. So that's where that suggestion comes to, comes from. And also, I would certainly like to reinforce what Mr. Harrisoff has mentioned regarding a separate taxing district. I am vehemently opposed to that. Certainly, for the fact that you, as Halsey, do not want to abdicate your responsibility to the taxpayers of the town of Bristol when it comes to increasing taxes. Second of all, and I'm sure many of you are aware of this, but by state law, whatever you appropriate in one fiscal year for a school budget cannot be reduced in the next fiscal year. So you're stuck. If you have a group that comes in and says, well, let's try this separate taxing district, which certainly, at prima facie, or at face value, is certainly going to benefit the town of Warren, and this group comes in and say they stay here for two years, or three years, or four years, and then you decide to change that, and that budget goes up $500,000, a million dollars each year, you're stuck with that until you go back and change it. So that's certainly an important point, everybody needs to be aware of, that you're losing your fiscal control over the school budget.
So I should say this, then. These are good ideas, and I believe that we need to consider all of them, but let me be really clear, all the options are on the table. It's not a threat to go one way or another. When we talk about the taxing authority, again, we don't know what we're specifically speaking of here. These are ideas that have been put out there with a lot of conversation that would still need to happen. I do, and I will say this very clearly, I do agree that this council should continue the oversight that it has, and not give that up. Why? Because if you're an entity, you can afford to have a myopic view, and it's a wonderful place to be, and I don't begrudge them that thought process, but we have to have a holistic view, which is considering the whole town, its residents, its seniors, its veterans, its children, its parents, everyone. children, its parents, everyone. So we have to consider all of that. So our thought process is to include all of that. And that doesn't mean that this entity that doesn't exist, that we don't even know what we're talking about right now, would not do that, too. But it's a guarantee that we will. So, and then it's also important to note, the administrator is sitting right there. He has the same thought process as we do, which is a holistic view. So, let's put this all in a big bow. One-
We certainly appreciate your approach, Mr. Chairman and the members of the council and the administration.
Number one, we are going to consider everything. Number two, we're on the table of saying that we are going to talk with the school committee and have open dialogue with them. We were on the record of saying that we are going to have open dialogue with the town of Warren and their council, and have open dialogue, and talk about what opportunities exist. I am skeptic, I am a skeptic of the school tax, but I think it would be irresponsible of me and my colleagues to rule out anything until hearing all of the opportunities.
Good words. And I'm certainly, I can speak for Mr. Harrisoff and myself, if there's any way that we can help, we're certainly available.
Thank you.
I certainly thank both of you for coming with your suggestion. With that said, as the chairman stated, we're not going to stop this conversation. We will be continuing it this evening later on. So with that, I make a motion to receive and file.
Second.
There's a motion to receive and file, and there's a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Happy fourth.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, is item F4, and this is the petition of Louis Fratorelli Jr. on behalf of the Harbor Festival Committee, request for permission to sell and serve alcoholic beverages at Rockwell Park for the Fourth Annual Bristol Harbor Festival, which will be held on August 12, 2017. You have recommendations from the town administrator, fire chief, director of public works, and chief of police to approve, in the case of the chief of police, to approve with certain conditions.
Mr. Chairman, based on all the recommendations, I make a motion to approve the Fourth Annual Harbor Festival.
Second. There's a motion and a second. This is your 30-second commercial.
Thank you very much. Good evening, council. It's our fourth year. Everything's going to stay the same, and we hope to see everybody there. It's on the 13th of August, from 2 to 9.
We look forward to it. It's always a success.
You said the 13th. Did you mean the 12th?
The 12th in here.
Sorry, the 12th.
No, that's okay. So what hap, so if I want to go to this, how do I buy tickets, and what happens when I buy that ticket?
You purchase the tickets at the Maritime Center, and you show up at 2 o'clock. The blessing starts at 2 for the boats, and then it's the same agenda. We haven't changed anything except for the time.
So good food.
Good food, good food, good time.
Good company. All right. And a beautiful view.
Correct.
All right. So we have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is the petition of Barney Birchfield, Five Deer Run Road, request council consideration to hold a public hearing, to consider a license to maintain town property, that hearing to be held at the next meeting, July 26.
Motion to call for the public hearing, July 26.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is item H1. This is continued from January 4. This is from Councilman Stewart regarding the request for status update of construction easements and final drafts of the Tanyad Brook Phase 2 plan. It's continued from January 4.
Diane.
Thank you.
Actually, one moment. Ed was going to share something. I apologize.
Oh, Ed.
Diane.
[laughing]
Very nice.
Thank you. So, yes, I'm happy to report we're moving ahead as planned. We're making good progress. We have about 25% of the easements signed. We have about another 25% ready to be signed. We still have about 50% that we're still working on finalizing. But as one of the residents said to me today, it's a bit like herding cats. You know, it's a lot of iterations back and forth on some of these, and then it's back and forth with the designing engineer, and then the homeowners. But we are moving forward. And I think if you, I would suggest maybe you could continue it for another three months, and then I can report back. Hopefully, that I'll have more signed easements.
Yeah, conversations with Diane. As you're all well aware of, the first phase on the process we went through, we're doing it a little different on the second phase to try to expedite in a manner that is fiscally responsible, but also prudent to the homeowners and the responsibility on behalf of the town, and the relationship with the homeowners throughout this project. Whether it's more time efficient remains to be seen. But I do believe that the, you know, responsibility of that dialogue with each homeowner individually and the needs that have to be met. Diane and I had conversations of, you know, the timeline, not to put pressure, but along with BETA, we have to think about fiscally where we're going, and if opportunities present itself for a shovel-ready project, because this project's been ongoing for quite some time. So the target should always be, try to be met. And Diane had some ideas to try to expedite it, get more involved. So I think September, hopefully, like she said, we had a quarter, we can get more of a percentile until we reach that 100% to reach that with our residents and move this project forward, so.
Diane, I have a couple of questions. How, just remind me, how many pending properties do we have?
There are 36 properties that are affected by this.
And of those 36, how many are left that we need to work through the particulars?
I think about half.
Wow.
About half. So that's about 18, yeah.
So assuming the same kind of timeline that we've gone with the 16 proxy, so that would mean, I'm concerned, obviously, about, as we all are, about the cost of construction and all of that, the farther we go out.
Well, and I know, and what I've been sharing is that the goal, I think the goal has been to get this shovel-ready by the end of the year, and get it out to bid for a spring 2018 construction. And that's what our target has been. I thought I would be a lot further along getting the easements. I realized that, as I said earlier, it's just an iterative process. We've had to meet with people out in the field, to go over the plans with them. This is, you know, a more densely developed neighborhood. There's more landscaping, there's fences, sheds, all of that that have to be looked at. So I think what's happened now is that I've reached out and I'm getting closure on some of these. So I'm hoping that it'll start to fall into place a little bit quicker than it's taken to this point, to make the initial, you know, steps that we had to do to kind of get the conversation started with the property owners again, or I shouldn't say started, but, you know, restarted once we got the easement documents and the estimates. Some of them are reaching out to their own landscapers and getting their own quotes on the landscaping. So then we kind of have to evaluate that and sort of see where we are with that. So, um, yeah.
The holdup is your continuing conversations with all the residents, but the continuing back and forth of, I call them, change orders for the final outcome before they sign off, which is the difference of the first phase where we went in after.
Right.
The second phase, once they sign off on it, it's almost like a conclusion after the project is done, it's all said and done, with each resident and what is expected on their property.
Right. And so, you know, we're taking more time upfront, but on Phase 1, we took a lot of time on the completion end of it, because we went out several times to do reloaming and seeding and replacement trees and other things that were necessary, because we didn't really spend the time in the beginning working through all of these. So you're right, it might take a little bit longer now, but then on the back end, it should be quicker.
So if you're amenable, you had mentioned about three months. September 13 would be about a, something like that. So why don't we, if Councilman Stewart's amenable to that, we push this off through, continue this to September 13? And so, again, you said there's 18 right now out of 36.
Right. So there's, there's about seven, I think six or seven that have been signed. There are about another half a dozen that are, have been sent to the property owners that they had no problem. They would just, I'm just waiting to get their signed documents back. And then there's another, like I said, about another half that are in different phases of finalizing.
Okay.
But you've worked through most of the big problems that some of the people had, correct? So these are all more going back and forth on pricing?
Right. It's both. It's pricing, it's questions. I received, I was out last week, but I received on my desk when I came back in, a resident had left me their easement with a list of, I think, 14 or 15 questions, you know, the fence, the trees, the construction, the-
The particulars.
Right, right.
Okay.
So it's different. Each one is very different, and-
I like it this way better. And I think it's actually in the, as Councilman Stewart already pointed out, it's in the best interest of the resident, because if you like Dave's landscaping to do all of your work, you use Dave.
Right.
And you get it the way that you want it. It's not using somebody that we're using and maybe not happy with it, so.
Right. And I think this part of the project is, it is, I hope, hopefully, it will be more efficient for the property owners at the end. And I think that this part of the project, as we, as we said going in, it's a little bit more complex with the properties and how they were developed, and everybody's got a different, you know, everybody's got a slightly different situation. And it's also, you know, believe it or not, on a few of them, there's a, you know, a family dynamic, too, you know. Just the residents themselves, they're not always in town, or they're working out of town, or so, you know. It's just, sometimes just getting a hold of people is a challenge.
Diane, are we, it sounds like a lot of scope changes with everybody's particular, how are we tracking cost changes for that? I mean-
Right.
You know what I mean, as far as-
Right.
Everybody's estimates come in, there's a few changes, but that skews what we had budgeted for. I just hate to see us go over by a lot.
Right. I agree. And I'm watching it closely. So we had an estimate prepared by BETA for the value of the compensation to the property owners. And my goal is to stay within that budget. And that's, that's a little bit why it's sort of a more, you know, it's a bit of a negotiation, too, with the property owners. And you have to be fair, and you want to make sure that they are getting the compensation to restore their properties back to what it, what it should be restored back to. So the change orders and the scope changes are really right now in just the compensation to the, to the properties. And there's not anything in terms of the construction, I mean, having said that, there's a few, you know, where, I'm trying to think. Well, just for example, there's a, I don't want to get too, but-
No, no, no.
There's a fence that isn't going to be put back because the property owner wants to do it himself. So in that respect, it's not going to be in the contractor's scope, it'll be in the, it'll be in the homeowner's scope. So there's things like that. There's nuances on each property. But there's, you know, to date, there's been nothing that's been, you know, a big constructibility issue or anything like that.
Yeah. And you answered my question, just that that's being tracked. That's-
Yes, I'm tracking it. Yes, I'm tracking it. Yes, yes, yes.
Well, I think in comparison, the perimeters fiscally of an assessment of each property going through Phase 1 and having a benchmark to fall in that guideline of, you know, what needs to be done versus at the end of a project and having demands and costs associated with those demands where the town, in that instance, would actually, and they have, abided by that. So I agree with Councilman Sweeney that we have to be fiscally responsible. And I agree with him that change orders you have to expect. But I think this might, this approach-
Limit those.
Limit those, have a benchmark, and then incorporate that not to be like the first phase where it just got blown up and you're at their peril, you know, so.
Mr. Administrator.
We had no agreements with anyone.
Yeah, I'd just like to weigh in. We do have, I think it's seven leases that were signed since I took office. And it's slow and steady, but we're being diligent, and we're making sure that every resident is happy, and it's a fair deal for us. We have our deadline, which is December 31, to have everything signed. I didn't want to get into all the details, because they are negotiations, but December 31. And we're planning, hopefully we can get the funding and break ground in the spring. So we're still on target from when we started in December. We're making slow and steady progress.
Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, I will continue this to September 13.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
Mr. Stewart, I think, just counting on my fingers, October 4 is actually three months.
I know. I was actually pushing it.
Pushing it up a little bit?
Yes, I was.
Okay.
Yeah, did it on purpose.
So, October 4th.
Are you on vacation?
No, September 13. I think it's, it'll be after the holiday and all of that stuff, and a nice update.
Sounds good.
Okay. So going once, September 13.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The, where were we? The other new business, item I1. Oh, no, I'm sorry.
H2.
The, H2. The Councilman Stewart requests information on the BCWA interconnect with East Providence and Pawtucket. This was continued from March 15.
I'll make this quick, because we did have a tri-town meeting with Barrington and Warren and the BCWA, May 23. It was very productive with the dialogue and the questions that were met. Again, as the administrator just stated, about a slow and steady project and progress, that's how we feel with the additional pipeline to Pawtucket. With that said, it was clarified that it's going to be a 24-inch pipe with the costs associated on the ratepayers themselves without East Providence, with a price tag of $20 million with a 10-year plan, with those rate increases associated with that. There was also discussions, as we stated here at these council meetings, with our delegation from the state, and where funding can be presented to the BCWA on behalf of our ratepayers, and also further talks with East Providence, which was stated that there is ongoing talks, they're not just, you know, abandoned with East Providence. So that is continuing with this item. I would just suggest that here in Bristol, we meet with our reps and senators, because while they're on recess, I think is the time to have this discussion for the important dialogue that is needed for the next session, right out of January of 2018, to help us along with this and, you know, expedite this so we can have more clarity going forward on behalf of the ratepayers. So I'll just make a motion that we can have a dialogue amongst those, and through the clerk, to arrange some type of meeting with our delegation for the state to have those conversations, and continue this maybe until February of 2018.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next up, we have item I1. This is correspondence from the chairman of the Harbor Commission recommending that the town code be changed to allow for a three-year term for the harbor master.
I'm actually, I'm in favor of an extended term for myself. I would like to see a two-year staggered, so not at the beginning of an election, but at one year in, and to make sure that there's some consistency in, you know, for that person, you, Greg, right? So there's some consistency there, so, and we-
You said two years. Do you mean three?
Two years. No, I mean two.
You're proposing a three-year. You're proposing two years instead of three.
Yeah, but do it at a staggered term, so meaning, so off one year from an election. So you would not be in fear of a loss of a job for a completely new council if that was, how's that? Or you would be, depending on what happened, right? So, no, I'm kidding. But that would, that's my personal opinion. I know that there are town employees with the three-year contracts, but there is no other town employee that is appointed by this council. For myself, I do believe it's appropriate. I do believe you should have some, some comfort there.
Instability.
Instability. Thank you. What's my, what do my colleagues think?
I think that three-year was appropriate. I mean, I, you know, when I read it, I thought it was job security, but also program planning security, in knowing, like, how you can plan something out over a certain amount of time, so there's not constant changing. I mean, fortunately, we've had harbor masters for a relatively long period of time, but with that one-year appointment process, it does make it more difficult. So you never know 100% sure what's going to happen. So I thought three years was okay, myself, when I read it.
Again, I was open to the three years, again, for a, number one, stability. Number two, Greg has proven himself to be a great harbor master and shown to, while we are expanding the Maritime Center, really has grown it, and it's exceeded expectations in my book. So I'm open to the three years.
Again, no disrespect to Greg. It's, you're right with that part of it, but if Greg is not there and someone else is, it then requires a change in the ordinance. So I think it allows both the flexibility and the comfort of the person that's sitting there, and also the council for opportunity to change if appropriate.
Greg, could you just speak for your- Greg, could you just speak, uh, for yourself in regards to the three years versus the staggered, because I'm all, you know, the chairman makes a good point
Well, maybe it would be like how they came to the three years, like, with the Harbor Commission, could you explain how they came to the three years?
That's what I was gonna ask.
Is the Harbor Commission here? No?
I don't think Dominic's here tonight.
No?
He's not hiding anywhere, um, they, it was just brought up, you know, we had the Harbor Management Planning Meeting, uh, to go over the Harbor Management Manual, and then at the subsequent meeting, it was discussed by, uh, Dominic and, and the committee to readjust it to three years, so it fell in line with the rest of the, the directors of the departments, so it could be more of a, ongoing projects, like you guys mentioned, and that kind of stuff, I mean, I, I would think, in September of, of the year prior to being reappointed, that you would come up and say, hey, we're gonna go a different direction, and, and we would go that way, you know, and, it was a long process, the, this, this last time around, so, um, I, you know, two years, three years, three years has stability, you know, you know, you gotta be around for a while unless you do something wrong, I mean, anybody can be fired at any time, I get that, um, two years, that's fine, I mean, it's two years, and
Two years is better than one, but
Two, two years is better than one, it's not like you're scratching your head in January, like, eh, do I have to ask the police chief for a ride home tonight?
Well, I definitely agree that one year, I'm glad this got addressed, uh, one year is, is not suitable for stability, uh, for anyone, um, so, um
So, does anybody else want to weigh in?
So, just for clarification, I think, you know, again, Greg's done a fantastic job, um, the commencement of the next two-year term, if we're gonna stagger him, would, um, would be the upcoming, uh, October, November of this year, December?
Yeah.
And then, so it'd be, so it's right now, for you, starts predictably
It would end up being three.
Security, two and a half years.
Yeah?
His start term starts in January.
January it starts.
January is
It's currently how it is, but we're doing an ordinance change here, so it's
Right, you could change it, right.
It's up to anything, right, so, so, any other, is, thoughts on this?
Yeah, because I, I just was questioning when you said we're changing the ordinance, but I think the appointment by the council is, that appointment's always in January, right?
It is, but
But it doesn't have to be.
As the chairman points out, I mean, you, you could decide that it would be on, you know, when the Tuesday on the full moon occurs in, in, um, October, you know, that it, it could be anything, if you're gonna change it, then you're gonna change it.
Well, I, I guess I need more clarity on the staggered, and, and then relatively
I just meant an off year from an election, which would, would add stability, in my opinion, um, because there would be consistency there, uh, and then, and its next renewal would be at another off-election time, so it was always not at a point of highest instability, if there is such a thing, um, but, on both ends, too, so, um, I think the next step would be that we would refer this, if, whatever term we want to go with, uh, to the solicitor and, uh, the administrator, well, actually, no, the, the clerk, um, and then we can have some discussions on, there is nothing in here right now about negotiating, because this is a council appointment, negotiating, um, the particulars, if you will, too, so that would also, if we're doing an ordinance on, on a term and a contract, that would also have to be included in there, too.
Can I make a suggestion, though?
Certainly.
I mean, if you are gonna go this route for the next coming appointment, whenever that deems to be, I think it would have to be three years and then two years, even if you wanted to go like a two-year staggered term, because next year will be an election year, so if you're going to two years starting January, or even this October, whenever it would be, then you probably need to do like a three-year, three years, and then two years.
Well, actually, if you, if you do it this year, in, in October, just to use October as an example, you'd be, when the next, uh, contract renewal was up, it would be an off-election year, forever and ever, because you'd be always off the election year, because this year is not the election year, October, it'll be next, so you, if you do it this year or two, there's consistency, um, and then we can get into the particulars, uh, so, it would be my suggestion, if, unless there's any issue with it, that we refer this to the Administrator, I'm sorry, I said that twice, to the Solicitor, um, to draft something for first reading at our next meeting.
So, outside concerns of the election year, let's just say, you know, of the instability
And I don't want to hear too much of that.
Yeah, we're not gonna lay it out, but I think everyone, you know, understands of, you know, who might be in this chamber, um, it, the balance of two years versus three years, I think, amongst my colleagues, of the stability, where does that lie, uh, for planning, um, and what does the year make for a difference?
Well, I wouldn't say anything in October, because it's standard of voting season, I mean, maybe like November, I mean, I don't, I don't see somebody like, being reappointed and they don't get appointed in, in October, when you're finishing up that voting year, it doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, I'm, you missed my, I apologize, you missed my point, I'm not suggesting it should be October, I was just using that as an example, I'm just saying, the end of this year at some point, whatever we all deem appropriate, whatever month it is, it doesn't matter.
I think Councilwoman was saying, that's why she, she made the suggestion that we could do the two years, but just do it in the winter where it's quiet and
If you do it in January of 18, you would, you would give somebody the contract for like the three, I think it would be like three years, that gets you off of that two-year election cycle, and then it goes two years thereafter, because it would be 18, am I, am I right, I don't know, I think that's right.
Okay, so, it would be three years, starting in January, Mary?
I'm just saying, I'm just asking, I mean, I'm just throwing that out, because that's how I'm thinking about it, without setting, setting, sitting down and like, looking at calendar, I mean, but, I don't
Quite honestly, I think if we approach this in the sense of that, unless we're looking to make a change, it's just more of a, of a process thing, so, I don't, I, I think the end of the year at whatever point, unless we're trying to make a change here, which we're not, uh, this is more of just putting in the contract at a, at a time, it doesn't matter actually where it is, there is, probably, there's probably, there's busier times of year, but certainly
They're always gonna be able to get rid of somebody, so
Right.
Right.
I mean, I personally go for the three years, I don't know how many, whatever, I think I, I'm hearing a mix of different things here, so.
So, is there a motion, since we've had a little bit of discussion on this?
Sure, I'll make a, a motion to, that we, um, do the office of the Harbor Master for three, three-year renewal period.
Second.
There's a motion and a, excuse me, in a second, any discussion?
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, passes, so we'll refer that to the Solicitor, I'm gonna do that one more time, am I not, huh, to the Solicitor, and that, we'll bring that in front of us at our next meeting for first reading. Beautiful, thank you.
Okay, the, um, the next item is the resolution authorizing the assessment evaluations, levy of taxes, sewer service fees, and sewer assessments for the current fiscal year.
Motion to adopt the resolution.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is bid 857, this is for the road resurfacing project, we have, uh, three proposals that have come in, the first is from J.H. Lynch and Sons of Cumberland in the amount of $712,100, the second from Cardi Corporation of Warwick in the amount of $590,320, and the third from Narragansett Improvement Company of Providence in the amount of $832,918.
What's this council's pleasure?
Uh, I would like to make a motion to refer this to the town administrator, to do the best interest of the town, um, we have been in conversation with the Director of Public Works with this year's road surfacing project, uh, being fiscally responsible with these bids, um, I know Steve will accommodate those conversations with these bids.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And the next two items are executive sessions, which, as usual, I am assuming we will take up that at the conclusion of the public agenda.
Yes.
And following that are the individual council member agenda items, beginning with the chairman.
So, in an effort to be brief, I said I would share a little bit more, and, um, thanks again to all the military, the Navy, uh, the Navy frigate, uh, that came in, the USS, excuse me, the USS Farragut, um, the concert series was particularly well-attended this year, um, wonderful event, I gotta tell you, one in particular, uh, Thursday night's concert with, it was a Billy Joel cover band, uh, the band was excellent, but actually, something stuck with me that Ray Labey said, which, and he probably said it at a few of the concerts, he said, "Look to your left, look to your right, shake that person's hand, look, now you're sitting next to a friend," and it was one of those things that, although it sounds hokey, is a big deal, and I saw it, and so did all of you, uh, again and again during the parade and afterwards, the kindness, uh, that people show to their neighbor, to a stranger, um, I was watching some of the bands march up, and some really, really big horns, and really dark uniforms, and residents and participants, and, uh, just paradegoers handing over water to somebody they don't know, just out of the kindness, so, there was a lot of that, that happened, uh, not only on the parade route, but after the parade route, I watched, uh, someone kind of take a, a dig, and the person in front of them turned around, helped them, picked them up, cleaned them off, um, and they didn't know each other, so, um, we have a lot of tough things going on in the world right now, um, but if we had a little bit more of what happens in Bristol, I think we'd be in a better place, I really do, um, so, that's what I wanted to share, happy Fourth of July again, happy, uh, Fourth of July to everyone that was here, that participated in all of this, thank you again to all, uh, the Police Department, uh, all the people that come in, the hundreds of officers that come in, the DPW with their, what I like to call every year with, uh, the, um, Charlie Brown Christmas special, they put their hands around the Christmas tree, and then magically, it's this beautiful tree, well, that's what DPW does with, uh, the parade route every year, it's just tremendous, uh, and then everyone else that's involved, including fire, and of course, the Fourth of July Committee, so, happy Fourth, everyone.
Mr. Sweeney?
I want to just echo the chairman's sentiments, that, first of all, the Fourth of July was fantastic, I think the fireworks were absolutely amazing, um, town administration done a great job, Chief Police, your department did a great job, DPW, Harbor Master, all the Fourth of July Committee, everybody that was involved, all the departments that maybe I've missed, just really did a great, great job, everybody I ran into, whether they were from Fort Lauderdale, Maryland, Annapolis, from Europe, they just said, boy, the town is looking so good, and you guys do this in such a great professional manner, and they felt safe, they said when they walked in the sidewalks and they were looking around, it was either clean, or they felt very safe, so, that goes a long way, I mean, we, we definitely know how to put this Fourth of July on, so, uh, it's definitely shipshape in Bristol fashion, that's for sure, and, uh, finally, I'll just, uh, I just wanted to let you know that the shelter won best of Rhode Island again, um, for five years in a row, so, again, excellent job, and to Diane Gibbrey, um, that's something to be, you know, be thankful for.
Absolutely.
Anyway, have a great night, that's all I've got.
Mr. Tiska?
I just want to say how fantastic it was to be involved in the Fourth of July celebration as a member of the Town Council, and, uh, thank you to all of my colleagues, uh, for being so gracious and, uh, getting me up to speed so quickly on when to be where, and
Parade etiquette.
The correct protocol. Uh, it was also an honor, um, as it is an honor every meeting, to sit, um, in the seat, formerly occupied by Councilman Harrisoff, it was an honor to carry his straw hat along the parade route.
Oh, is that what it was?
It didn't fit, and he says my head's swollen more than his, which I doubt, but bigger than a seven and an eighth is what holds these hat sizes, but, um, so it was an honor to carry his straw hat anyways, as an accessory along the parade, so, uh, thanks to all of you, uh, who have allowed me to serve in this capacity, thank you.
Ms. Perella?
Thank you, well, a couple of things, um, again, I want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues, and I will mention, uh, Jose and Greg, who are here, your departments, because they're, uh, important as well, and rescue, I know it was a hot day, constant sun, and I saw lots of people, um, a couple of people by the reviewing stand go down, and they did a very efficient job of getting people to cooling stations and so forth, and certainly, DPW, like I said to my nephew's girlfriend, who hadn't been here before, just see it the next day, and it's like magic, because you would never know something happened, but certainly to the Police Department, with all that's going on in the world, um, to see the heavy equipment, to see all the security, um, at all the places, is, is quite a phenomenal job, and thank you very, very much, because, you know, you never, there's a time when we never had to think about that stuff, now we see it on TV constantly, and, um, so we're very, very fortunate. Secondly, I would just like to mention, sort of a shout-out, if you will, um, I had the good, we all met him yesterday, but, um, during the Chief Marshal's reception, I had the good fortune to meet and have a, a little chat with Sergeant George Vera, who was a, um, very good friend of Sergeant Andrew McKenna, who as we know, was killed, um, when his, um, when his camp in Afghanistan was attacked, Sergeant Vera was with him, they've been friends for many, many years, he was with him, and he was severely wounded, and he is still in, um, took him, up until this time, he still goes to rehab five days a week, um, he was telling me he lives in Tampa with his wife, Angela, and his daughter, and, um, he was hoping to get up here, one of his motivations from what he told me was that he was hoping to get up here last year to be able to, because he's heard about this parade ever since he met Andrew 15 years ago, and also, I think, to be able to see, um, Andrew's place of rest and so forth, uh, but he wasn't quite well enough to do it last year, was here la, uh, this year, so we all got to meet him at the patriotic exercises, and then at the parade, but I just wanted to mention that, because, you know, as we know that both Andrew McKenna and Sergeant Vera, those guys who were able to fight off that, um, that attack, are credited with saving so many American soldiers' lives that night, and, uh, they're all really truly heroes, so I'm very happy to have met him, and, um, I'm very, very, very pleased that he was well enough to come up and make this trip, and he seemed like he was really enjoying the parade and the festivities here, and I just happened to, I don't know, I ever look at my newspaper in the morning, I always look in the afternoon, but I happen, or night, when I get home from work, but I happened to look at it just before I came, and the front page of the paper, of the Providence Journal, was an article, um, actually, a picture of him in an article, uh, that really talked a lot about he and Sergeant McKenna, and I thought it was really fitting, and he said, Andrew maybe underplayed this, or else he would have really made an effort to get here even sooner, so, I'm very, very, very pleased about that, I'm sure we all are, and then finally, I would just like to mention that the, um, one event to the next, and that is the, um, Our Lady of Mount Carmel's, uh, 16th of July, or, their feast kicks off on Thursday, the 13th, where they have limited food items, um, and then it's 14th, July 14th, 15th, and 16th, so it really starts, um, two weeks from tomorrow, on the Bristol Town Common, so, with that, thank you very much.
Mr. Stewart?
So, uh, as Councilwoman Perella just stated, uh, I was glad I got to briefly say goodbye to Specialist Vera at the VFW before this meeting, uh, the McKenna family, uh, had a going-away party for him, and it was very nice to, uh, have the conversation with him, and I just express as a civilian that, um, I can't express, or, or say thank you enough, to not only him, but all our military families, the people who put themselves in harm's way, and sacrificed their lives not only for all of us, but also their, their loved ones that they leave, uh, time and time again, uh, we should really cherish the freedom, uh, we, every Fourth of July, celebrate the birthday of our country, we stay and celebrate Veterans Day, Memorial Day, and, um, I, I believe, and I always say this, that we have to thank them every day and be mindful, uh, of what is happening, as the chairman says, and these hardships of the world we live in today, also, during the patriotic, patriotic exercises, um, I got to speak with, uh, First Sergeant, uh, Tom Daly, uh, who we pay tribute to for his many years and sacrifice, and he handed us all this, uh, insert of the, the Battle of the Chosen Reservoir that he was involved in many years ago, um, you know, in the year of 1950, but, just briefly, I know we've been here for a while, I just want to state that on the top, it says, "Whatever we were in that frozen long ago, and whatever we are now, we are bound as one for life in an exclusive fraternity of honor, the only way into our ranks is to have paid the dues of our duty, sacrifice, and valor by being there, the cost of joining inshore is beyond all earthly wealth, and that comes from your soldiers, and beyond all earthly wealth, that they put their lives on the line, and, uh, Mr. Vera just said, 'Take care of the McKenna family,' and I said, 'You have no worries there when it comes to the Town of Bristol, and, and all of us here in this nation honoring them all,' um, so, again, my colleagues did a wonderful job, uh, I, I also can't thank enough, day in and day out, of the Fourth of July Committee, all our departments that protect us here in town, our Police Department, the ones who keep our town for every project going forward clean, and, and there, time and time again, we should be very proud and thankful here in Bristol, and throughout, I was, uh, very proud, uh, every Friday, we eagerly wait for our packets, um, and sometimes there's additional supplements, um, from organizations that are very meaningful, that we usually advertise to the community, um, and I mentioned this the last meeting, but, to my surprise, this was a wonderful packet that I received, Lou, that you added these, thank you cards from each student from Ms. Vera's second-grade class, uh, part Vera's second-grade class, part of my packet. So, this was my first, I always do my due diligence, but I have to say, before reading the agenda, I read each and every card, and I just want to say it meant a lot to me, and I want to thank that second-grade class at Codenture School. With that, my colleague, Councilwoman Perella, said the feast of Our Lady Mount Carmel, don't forget good food, but more importantly, it's the 100th anniversary of Our Lady Mount Carmel here in our town, and I thought it was very fitting that this year's Chief Marshal is no other than Father Henry Zino. He's very fit for it, he's, he's ready to go. So, with that, I thank everybody who came out tonight, everybody who's tuning in at home. Thank you, Mike Davis, Archie Martins, and everyone have a pleasant summer. Thank you.
Town Administrator, agenda items.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to reiterate what the council, Honorable Council, stated about the Fourth of July. It truly is remarkable how everything comes together, and it's, it's a very long plan. Last year, I was able to watch the parade, and this year, I was, I had the honor and the privilege of marching and, and waving, and it was quite a thrill, I can tell you. My wife and I really enjoyed it. It was a little bit different than marching with the Police Department, where I couldn't do much waving then, but I think the Chief would be proud to know that I already started the after-action report, a few items, though I thought it was pretty flawless, there's always room for improvement, and, but I could tell you, I was more than confident in the abilities of all of our departments, Police, Fire, DPW, Harbor, you know, everybody really pitched in, and I was more than confident as far as safety, which is always on our minds, and I thought it was a remarkable day and really a privilege. A few other projects, they're really coming to fruition now. The Prudence Island Dock, in case you haven't noticed, it's up and running. Has a veto today, the lease is approved, and I think the public is gonna really be thrilled to see what's gonna happen there. Approximately a million dollar investment into those two little houses that have a lot of historical value to the town. They'll be taxed ultimately, taxed as you all know, but I'm not sure if the public knows it yet, at the new value ultimately, after a few years. There'll be a small lease payment, streetscape, and the best part is the, the property in the back will remain open space as originally intended. I was down there this morning with Diane and Greg and our Highway Director, and we're already looking to move forward with the boardwalk for public access, and I can assure you that it is gonna be public access. We spoke to the fishermen, we're gonna make sure that there is transient space there, and we're gonna change, but we're gonna change the right way. We're not gonna forget who we are and what's important to us. So, good growth. Road paving's gonna be starting this summer, and we're gonna try to get the most bang for the buck. Not every street can get paved. It's, it's difficult to ask people to be patient, but I've been working with the Highway Department Director this summer, we're gonna do some saw cutting and, and hot patching. We're gonna try to make the, the temporary potholes a little bit more permanent, till we can get to all the streets up to where they need to be. But slow and steady progress, it's an honor to be a part of it, and, other than that, have a great summer.
The motion would be to convene into executive session pursuant to 42465A, two litigation involving Bristol Warren Regional School District and 42465A5, lease involving Wally School.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, good night, everyone.